Yep, there she is.
I downloaded the spreadsheet, but for some reason I couldn't get these, but you printed them off anyway, so.
I can't get anything off my email.
You can't?
No, I can see that.
Well, I have mine all, I don't even go to the Monroe one, I have it all forwarded to another email.
Oh, do you?
Yeah. It's like, I thought we were supposed to update from the old format.
Well, and that's the thing, mine kind of got like family done, so it's really worked well.
That's kind of where I'm at, so.
Okay, at some point we'll figure it out.
Oh shoot, I forgot to bring a pen in, hello.
We have a pen over there.
I got one out there.
Yeah.
I have, I have a tablet.
I left you a huge pile at City Hall.
Okay.
To help.
Oh, I'm supposed to remind you about the barb.
You know, they have those little bags over at the dog park.
Yes.
Yes, I totally forgot about that.
We'll get started in just a moment, folks. Okay, does everybody have their, their two packets?
Yes.
Okay.
Which one's one and which one's two?
Uh, the bigger one is one.
Okay.
Thank you. Yep. I don't have, oh, I need that. Details, thank you.
Counselor Linder do it by proxy for you.
I suppose. Good. It's so much more fun when I do it. Okay. Um, all right, I'm gonna go ahead and bring our special city council meeting number one to order for this March twentieth, twenty twenty five. So let's go ahead and jump right in. Let me go ahead and read the, well, I've called it to order, let's do the pledge of allegiance and then we'll get down to it.
Pledge allegiance to the land of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I have one, two.
That's good.
Lots of practice. All right, let's do roll call. I see Counselor Williams is online, so I want to go, yeah, excellent, thank you. Counselor Myers.
Here.
I'm here.
Mayor Chees.
Counselor Cuthbertson.
Here.
Counselor Linder.
Here.
And Counselor Ray.
Here.
Excellent, okay. All right, it's for you. Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead and I'm gonna read the, the purpose or the statement, the reason for the meeting tonight. The purpose of this special council meeting is to consider two resolutions supporting city employees during a transition period with the city of Monroe, including a cost of living adjustment or COLA and temporary pay increases. So let's go ahead and we've got the first packets in front of us. Let's go ahead and look at resolution twenty twenty five dash eleven. This is a resolution authorizing a cost of living adjustment COLA increase of two point five percent for all city employees effective January one, twenty twenty five. So that should be the first thing up.
And you want us, one of us to call for that resolution to be voted on, or did we want to discuss first?
Um.
Pretty straightforward.
We have, we have, I don't think we need to, I think we just, let's just dive into this.
I'll make a motion that we pass resolution number twenty twenty five dash eleven. A resolution authorizing a cost of living adjustment COLA increase for all city employees.
I'll second.
Okay. All right. Comments, questions?
I, I just wanna clarify, or I don't even know if it's clarified, but just want to verify, I guess, that we normally do COLAs and so that should already be budgeted and it's not something that would be extra extra. Can't use my words correct.
We had to look into this before creating the budget, the budget's not finalized. They're supposed to get a COLA every January.
Correct.
And I don't know if it's been budgeted for.
Okay.
Basically.
I just want to make sure that we have that information that we.
Yeah. One other question for clarification. I presume this is on, on the base salary.
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. So any per diem that we do for extra work won't be in this COLA?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just a straight COLA.
Yeah.
I wanted, I was gonna mention something, I wonder what it was. Alrighty then.
Can I clarify that it's retroactive to January first?
Yes.
Yeah.
If I said that. Thank you for clarifying it, just to make sure everyone's clear on that.
It's in print.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just increased, yeah.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I don't know what it was, it's gone now. Must not have been very important. Okay, so I've got a first, I've got a first and a second motion on that.
Oh.
Any other questions, go ahead.
Not a question, but a comment, so I did update, you'll see in the, the third page is all the salary grades, they've been adjusted with the two and a half percent. So these new pay grades here reflect what should have gone into effect on January first.
So, and I also, I don't know if you noticed, Counselor Linder, I went ahead and I added the groundskeeper.
Oh, thank you.
So we had, we had something from twenty twenty two.
Excellent.
Could not find anything. You know, even, you know, something a little newer.
Yeah.
So I'm going off of that and I went ahead and made the adjustments. So I, so what you see for on the, this is what the bottom of page, what, three or four? That should have the COLA. This is seventeen dollars ninety five cents, that should be the COLA. And I, the step increases were weird, I don't even know why, we'll talk about that one later.
Stuffing great stuff.
Figured out what he, what the person did.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, anyway, any other questions, comments, concerns?
The only concern I would have is that if we go ahead and vote on all this now, as, and I don't want to sound like I'm not thankful for our people and I want them to be paid.
Yes.
But my concern is just budget wise, and if we find that we don't have budget, do what would our, do, do we know what we're gonna do at that point? Because we're, we're gonna be dealing with a lot of that coming up, so it's a little scary to be making moves when we don't
Right.
quite know what our budget is.
I, I think we're going off of basically, we don't have a city administrator to pay at this point. So I think that
We're gonna rob.
We, we, we're gonna essentially use that.
Not rob, but you know.
You know.
No, and I get that, it's just that moving forward, we, you know, we're gonna look at that again too.
Right.
So then that, we're not gonna have funds for that, so I just want to make sure that we're all kind of on the same page.
Yeah, no, completely understand that.
Yeah.
Budget is in the form of most of all of our minds, I'm sure.
Exactly.
And I, I believe in our last meeting, we determined that we will likely be having regular budget meetings going forward, I mean, even though we're gonna have to, we're gonna be making a lot of changes and adjustments as we get caught up in where we should be. So we'll have an opportunity to readjust and revisit if we need to.
Yes, this is very true.
Which is fine, I just, I don't want to say, here's your raise, oh, never mind, we didn't have that money and take it back.
We can't.
So I just want to make sure that we're being careful about what we're doing.
And I understand, yes.
Nice as we can.
I know, it's really hard because we know how hard our people are working, it's not that we don't appreciate them and don't want to be able to pay them what they're worth, but we also have a, have budgetary restrictions, so.
Also, it should be noted that these COLA increases were communicated to staff and were never put in place, so we are actually obligated to fulfill them anyway.
Absolutely.
So even if it has an impact on the budget.
Counselor Williams.
Correct.
Yeah, I agree with that statement, these are not raises, these are COLA adjustments and they have been, you know, already provided in anticipation that this would pass, so it is really a requirement on our part to fulfill that.
And even though I can't confirm, but normally on the budget side, we always try to count a COLA in when we make that budget anyway.
We do.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not super concerned, I am concerned, but, uh, you know, I
Correct.
I'd rather pay our people because we need to keep them here.
Absolutely.
And we can always
Oh, yeah.
forestall something else if we have to.
Right.
Because that's been one of the biggest problems of this city is keeping people.
Turnover, it's huge.
Absolutely.
Yeah. And, and we need a job here for anyone.
Did you actually kind of look at, see how much it would really be for a year, it's really not that much, like, for example, I just did Dawn, it's
Oh, yeah.
Fourteen hundred and fifty six dollars a year.
Right.
For the year.
Yeah.
Wages are usually dropping a bucket in your budget, so.
I mean, but you, you also have to calculate in our percentage of the pers that we had.
Yeah, I understand.
But, I mean, it, it's still a minimal amount.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay. All right, any other comments? Yes, sir.
What's up?
Okay, good. I'm ready.
When she, when she gets to.
Ready to vote? We have some representation going on over there. Okay, are we ready to vote over there?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Okay. Counselor Williams.
Yes.
Counselor Myers.
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbertson.
Yes.
Counselor Linder.
Yes.
Counselor Ray.
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. All right. Next up is our second resolution. Resolution twenty twenty five dash twelve. This is a resolution authorizing temporary pay increases for city employees performing increased duties outside of normal job responsibilities. And this would go on, if, if this was to pass, it would go into effect on March third, twenty twenty five. Okay, so that is also in your packet, it's behind what we just talked about. And there is all kinds of supporting documentation. Dawn did get those emails in here, correct?
She did, or I don't know if she got the email, she did get the job descriptions and the spreadsheet that shows what each person has been taking on.
Okay, good.
Um, I did hear from Mark earlier today, I think you and Counselor Williams probably saw that email.
Yep.
Um. From Mark, and it's about Chuck Cross is not performing work that is outside of his current job description, but he is, he has had to learn things right away that he probably wouldn't have learned till later. That said, so I don't think that necessarily warrants a temporary pay increase, but we did also receive an email from Dawn saying she's a little worried about him not sticking around at the wage he's currently earning, because it's pretty specialized technical work, so. Two related, but also different topics.
Way that we can raise him in a step?
Probation, he's gonna be out of probation here at next month, is my understanding.
His probation period ends.
I mean, he will get, he will get
A step up.
Yeah.
Yeah, he will, so there is that too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I had a good question on his, on his job description, it said, he's the utility worker one, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
That, that probationary period was three months?
Six months.
Did it say three months in the JD in the job description, I thought that's what I read.
Uh, no, his job offer said six months.
Okay. Okay. Never mind, I apologize.
Oh, okay, so under distinguishing features, it says this position does not include benefits and the probationary period is for three months. So the job description does not align with what was in the job offer, go figure.
Okay, well, we, I think we have Thank you for pointing it out, we, I think we have to go off of the job offer.
Let me see if I can find it in my email.
The legal documents, fine, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And unfortunately, that's still a mistake on our part.
Yes, it is, and that needs to be corrected.
Yeah.
Job descriptions need to be reviewed again.
And is, is he, is he part time?
No.
No, he's full time.
Okay.
So is there any way we can bump up his step?
Yeah, I was gonna say, can we bring that more in alignment since it's?
So bring it in alignment sooner?
Yeah, because
Yeah.
No, he signed that agreement, that doesn't mean we don't, we can't advance it.
Yeah, I agree. That's what I'm wondering.
My only concern.
Yep.
Just one concern. I have many, but this is for right now, just one. So we have someone, we have two people that are on probation right now. So if we, and I completely understand.
I get you.
Yeah, I completely understand Chuck's job is completely different from Gobby's. One is more technical than the other, I'm just saying that out loud, you know.
Are this, do they have the same start time?
No.
No.
She's four months, four and a half months behind Chuck.
Yeah.
So her probationary period isn't gonna end for a while.
And what was her offer, job offer, probation?
It should have been six months, because Steve told us there were six months, and that's what's in the job offers, but that's not what's in the PD.
By that, just in case, and then that way, that'll help us make a decision as well.
Okay, so, uh, Counselor Ray just found it in her PD, it does say six months.
Okay, so it doesn't hurt, okay.
So we're okay. I had another question, but like Dan, I forgot it.
No, it's that, that kind of day.
Yeah.
So I know in the resolution itself, I put, I put some phrasing in there to kind of help guide us a little bit.
I did have, I remember the question now, these temporary pay increases, is this gonna be for the whole eight hours or whatever full shift they do? Or is it gonna be based on the job?
It's proportionate to the number of hours they're contributing to that work.
Okay, so it is based on the job. Like four hours for this job, two hours for that job, two hours for that job.
Yeah, I mean, we're not gonna break it down quite to that granular level, because that's kind of an administrative burden for Dawn to have to track all that, but like, it'll probably be like a percent of, like, say they're each spending five or six hours per week on these higher level tasks, maybe we do like a seven and a half percent increase, I don't know, we'd have to, we'd have to math it out, but that's what we're discussing.
Well, you know, that's, you know, like, you know, Counselor Ray is probably familiar with the job cards, you have to put powers at this job.
You know, we have a card that we swipe and then it has a list of your job codes and you put your job code in and it's a pay difference, you know, so.
Yeah.
Right.
So.
But it is, it's an account, can be an accounting night.
Yeah. Yeah, you have to have a dedicated staff do that.
So my, just for what it's worth, so my perception is that everyone that's on staff right now, they are doing some, they are doing something outside of their, their
Um.
Gobby is actually doing the, the web piece of it.
Yeah.
That's not part of her job description as far as I know.
Correct.
Yeah.
Chuck is not working outside of class, but he has had to take on things that he
Yeah.
Technically, he should, yeah.
Much sooner than.
He's advanced further in his position technically.
Right. Right.
And I did find Mark's original job offer, which isn't the same as Chuck's, but they're both utility workers, Mark's had a six month probationary period.
Okay.
Okay, so I think it was a mistype.
It sounds like it.
Unless we updated something somewhere along the line.
Yeah.
One of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't, anyway.
So I know for something similar we do at our facility is we'll have people that are in a certain position training and say, we got a four-year program and we get, we allow them to submit a letter, we don't need to have them submit a letter, but this is just an example to, to us, to our committee and six months early, and then we talk and we allow them to test or whatever. If they're, if they show aptitude and advancing sooner than normal, instead of making them.
So you can advance the stepping grade there?
So we advance, yeah, we advance their stepping grade at pay.
Good employee.
So that's just an example.
Right.
Where you're kind of running into this scenario where if he's showing aptitude and advancing in his training to where he would, so.
Right. Yeah, that's right, I, I think the step and grade timelines are, are basically a guideline, like you say, if you have somebody showing that they're gonna go up meteorically.
Yeah. And we're also not a union employer, so we actually have a lot of flexibility outside of these salary ranges, like you said, it's a great, or it's a guide, so we're not beholden to them.
Public employees, so.
Right.
Yeah, that's true.
There's still some of that.
Okay, so we've got Chuck is here. This is what the COLA at twenty one dollars and seventy four cents. If we were to adjust him up a step, that would move him to, it looks like twenty two seventy one, if I'm reading this correctly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Can we adjust him up, but he's still on pro, in his probationary period?
Yeah.
Yes.
I mean, that's just a thought process, because then it
I agree.
It's like he's already testing out at the higher grade.
Right.
We're just acknowledging.
Yeah, still has to do the full term.
Exactly, and then that way it gives a little leeway to be a little, have a little more, I, using all the wrong words tonight, but like oversight, but be able to kind of check in on him a little more, say, is this fitting, is this not fitting?
And we've got Mark and we've got Chuck Schultz to
Exactly.
Question, and it kind of goes back to the last resolution, but I hope we're not gonna pay him out lump sum where they get hit taxes, heavier taxes.
We're only two months past, so they're not gonna get a big chunk, I mean, you just did the math.
Yeah.
It's a small, it's a small one, but it's a, that's a great thought, it's something people get a bonus and they get like twenty five percent taken out, but that won't be the case here. It's, it's not like a
I mean, I've had a month behind, sometimes get hit fifty percent.
Boy.
Well, I'm in South.
Commission's not a town.
Twenty four dollars.
Yeah.
For Dawn, for example.
For two months. Okay.
Shouldn't be too bad.
That's a good point, though. We've had that happen.
Yeah, I don't want him to get hurt.
Yeah, it's awful, yeah.
Yeah.
And I guess there's an addition to that is, did we ever offer any of them to have it paid out in installments? Bonus on each check, or is that gonna be too much?
Who's doing payroll, Dawn?
It's Dawn, she's overworked, she's got a lot on her way.
Once again, you're just doing another extra step in the payroll process and I hear you on the taxes, I really do, but.
I don't think they're gonna get hit hard for that payout, yeah.
Yes, it's two months.
Yeah.
It's not a whole lot.
If it was two months of full time, if like a hundred and seventy three point three three hours of two months, like, that would be a hard hit.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm just trying to look out for him, because I've been in that position, so.
Exactly, good point.
So, okay, we've, we've talked about Chuck and bumping him up a step.
Yeah.
I have a question about Chuck really quick.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I, I looked at all of this earlier, but my computer died and I forgot my battery at home, so um, I might need you to help me with this, so we're gonna bump him up a, a level, right?
Yeah.
Is that what we're proposing? And so once he completes his six months, does he get another bump in step?
I think it's fifty cents an hour or something like that.
No, so fifty cents an hour is for a differential and he doesn't have any differentials for certification, so my, my thinking is he would not go up another step. Well.
Hmm.
Uh, I don't want him to get shorted on it though either.
Yeah, my understanding was that probation, once they've completed, then they, they get some sort of increase of some sort.
So I mean, if we give it to him early, that doesn't, it's not a huge boon to him, it's just like he gets a little tiny bit a little bit earlier.
Yeah.
What, what do you think, Counselor Williams, do you have concerns if he gets a second step increase?
No, I think he should.
Okay.
Okay.
That's kind of where I'm leaning to.
Okay.
If, if.
So what you're saying is you'll get, we'll give him this step here, and then after he's done the probation, he'll get this step, or are you gonna wait?
I think
It won't be a, it won't be a step, it'll be
Well, it would be a second step, so he would get the two and a half percent increase, one, one, and then we would essentially correct his pay to twenty twenty, twenty two seventy one. Because he's, he was probably paced low, placed low on the grade, given
Right.
his experience. I was actually very surprised to see his rate, considering he like owned a water and construction
Yeah.
business, and then
Exactly.
And then we would give him another step, so basically he'd go up two steps on his probation. Again, we do have another person on probationary period who'll be coming out of there, so I don't know if that's gonna create an inconsistency with that person.
Well, I mean, there are different, there are different points of their probation, so I mean, if they both got right now some type of increase, whether it's temporary or not. Whether it's temporary or not, and then when they both come out of their probations, whenever that, whenever that is, then they get another, you know, bump from there.
Different job classifications too, so. Yeah.
And it's going to be hard to say what's happening in another three months as to whether they're going to take more on. So they would get a bump anyway, or how, how all that's going to fit.
Yeah.
So, you know, it's something that we're going to have to have enough eyes on it that we really know what's going on in another three months anyway.
I hope that over the next several months that they're keeping, you know, writing down the things and keeping track and going, hey, wait a minute. I'm actually doing more than I realized type.
Right.
And then we revisit it again, obviously.
Yeah.
So then we agree that Chuck should actually be going from step two to step four. Does that sound okay, based on his qualifications?
Eventually, when he's done with this, when he's done with his probation.
Yeah.
Agreed.
Okay, so then do we want to talk about Gobby next? Or do we want to talk about Mark next? Because Mark is topped out.
Yeah.
There's a couple of different things we could probably do with Mark.
And he's, he's uh, still utility two?
He's utility two, he's, he's got the.
He's got a credential.
He has, he has certification, he's the public works lead. He told us the other day that Chuck Schultz said that he's, it's going to be a little bit before. He's going to get bumped to the next grade, I guess. So it's, it's going to be a little while. But I, and I'll just throw it out there. Um, I know Mark is doing more. He's doing more administrative things than he was before.
Yeah.
He is, he's, he's working himself into like an acting supervisor, an acting supervisor type of situation.
Supervisor or lead?
Well, I mean, he's.
All reporting, it looks like.
Yeah, I mean, he's, he is a public works lead already.
Okay. Does he get anything extra for that?
I don't, I don't think so. So. Lead supervisor, whatever the case may be.
Yeah.
Can I just point out really quick? I did not create these K grades. They are so wonky. The fact that they only have six steps means employees max out at the top really early and then.
Standard public works.
Usually it's ten steps plus, right?
And they're, I mean.
Well, you know, it's, it's like certain places have, like, we have twenty four steps. And out at Pope and Dobbit, I think they only had eight steps.
But the percent, the delta between each step increases so much that people, if, if it were six steps and the percentage was smaller. Then you would have more room at the end to add steps if you wanted to, but.
Right.
If we were to go higher than step six for any of these grades, we would actually be out of market based on the salary survey did.
Yeah.
It's just, it's, it's just, I, I would say maybe it's not the number of steps so much as it's the delta between each step. It's a little bit weird. I've never seen anything like that. That's.
Yeah.
It goes from three and a half to seven and a half percent.
That is quite a bit.
Just gradually going up or is they going, okay, this is from five to six and a half. So it's like almost like a one percent. Yeah.
Percent.
Yeah, that's like.
That's a big.
They're like twice as much.
Anyway, just, I didn't make these. They were in place.
Are, are we able to revisit those at some point? I mean, I, right now, all of us are kind of tapped down in what we can do. But when things settle down, is it something worth revisiting and maybe looking at?
It, so that's something that the mayor and I have talked about. I don't know how we would revisit it when we have two employees who are already basically capped out. There isn't anywhere for them to go above this. Usually in, is, you're probably familiar with Counselor. Um, when somebody's at the top step of a grade, they get red circled and it just means they collect the cola each year. And maybe there's like an extra step, kind of like what you're talking about. Maybe there's like a career enhancement growth program where they can get an extra step outside of the range. Maybe we could do something that, like that for our people, but until he starts getting more certifications and collecting different differentials. He's going to be capped out and just getting a cola.
Gotcha.
Because there's nowhere for him to go that won't put him out of the market range.
Other one that's tapped out?
Um, Dawn's really, Dawn's getting close. We have a, we have ideas for Dawn.
But yeah, and then, but, and that's kind of where I was going because there's other things that she could possibly take on that would give her bumps as well. So the good news is there is something for them to get a little bit more with growth.
Yeah.
Um, so, okay, that's, I just was.
I don't see any reason why I can't revisit this. Like it was pointed out, they're not union, so you can always readjust this.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, the other thing we could do is we could, um, well, if there already is step six, like you say. We can't really say, oh, well, now the new step six is this rate.
Right.
Mm hmm. Well, they're already that step.
Right. And you can't just add a step seven arbitrarily easily.
Yeah, like, so, yeah, I see where the problem is.
It's, yeah.
Yeah.
I, I love that there's a rhyme and a reason between the steps. They're just really wonky and it's a short range.
Who made these?
I'm assuming the former city administrator.
Yeah, F C A. That's what I've been calling him in my.
It's better than C A because F C A is confusing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So back to Mark.
Sorry, yeah, so. So.
What do we want to do for Mark?
Definitely needs a temporary pay increase.
Can we have an adder for the, I mean. Like a, like you said, he's doing a lot of administrative.
So if you, if you go back toward it in the packet, there's a spreadsheet that shows what each of the employees has taken on. And how many?
Is that the spreadsheet you sent in the email?
Yeah, and it's printed out here too.
Oh, because I don't see anything for Chuck or Ron.
There isn't one for Chuck in there. Yeah, and we don't know what, if anything, Ron is doing. I mean, we don't know what Ron is doing outside.
Cost of living increase, so I mean, there is that.
Yeah, so Chuck, Mark told me that Chuck is not doing anything outside of his job description. He's just operating at a higher level within his.
Yeah, but in, in his.
Yeah.
In his, in his write-up, it says that, uh, oh, maybe it's Chuck Schultz, isn't it? Two Chucks.
There's two Chucks.
Uh, it's this, this one, right?
Chuck's right here. He says that Chuck C has stepped into a lot of the usual tasks he's been doing.
Yeah, yeah, so, so Mark said Chuck has, I, my interpretation was Chuck has stepped into a lot of the, the tasks he's supposed to do, not what Mark has been doing.
Okay.
But maybe I should reread it. Let me reread it, make sure I understand.
He said that he had been doing, but then again, that doesn't mean it's outside of more, um, it's not outside of Chuck's job description. It's just that he's starting to do them.
Yeah.
And it's possible that Mark as a utility worker two is assigned, it like his, if he had a classification. It would probably say, be able to perform the duties of utility worker one as well. So maybe some of the utility worker one work that Mark was doing is now being done by Chuck, who is utility worker one.
Yeah, I mean, could we give him a administrative adder?
Sorry, sorry, I said it again.
From hit, from this description in here, it says like he's doing, uh.
You're talking about Mark?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Doing quite a bit of more administrative work. And can we give him a, a per diem for administrative on top of these other tasks? I mean, because you say he's topped out, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know if we would even call it a per diem. I think we should just give him a percent, a temporary percent increase, like, yeah, seven, seven and a half percent.
We were kind of doing that with, with our former um, city administrator. Because he was wearing so many different hats. So he got a little portion of this, little portion of that. So I don't know why we couldn't.
Yeah.
Then do that with who we have according to what they're taking on.
Yeah, we'd say like ten percent of his pay is from administrative.
Right. Right.
Or whatever it comes out to be.
Right. Not sure how we'll do that, but.
Somebody's got to figure it out.
Right.
We could take it out of, out of the counselor salaries.
Well, yeah, that bag of money that we have laying around.
I'm going in the negative then.
Funny is because, you know, I get crap from people saying, oh, you counselors and you guys get paid and go, no, we don't work for the city cravallis or you do. Where they get eight hundred dollars a month or a meeting or something.
That's another subject, though. I think we might look into one for the mayor soon because mayor is doing a lot, a lot, a lot lately.
Yeah, he's trying to do a lot of other stuff.
That'll be a, another topic day, another.
Another day.
The F C A. He's doing part of the F C A.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
So, okay, so for, are we talking about Mark or Chuck? Sorry.
Mark right now.
Um, yes, I agree, a percent of some kind for the higher level work, the admin work.
Yeah, we just need to know what that percentage or how many hours.
Yeah, I mean, because you don't have.
Not been tracking the hours.
Have to change his salary there, but you just have to say, okay, because of this added job, you have this little adder.
Yeah.
Yeah. So he's, yeah, he said he doesn't know, I honestly have not necessarily tracked any time I've spent on any extra duties. He just does them because he's a nice guy.
Doing, he's doing all the, the reporting.
Right.
And we know that's probably the, one of the most important things because what it's cost us in the past. And so I want to make sure he's comfortable spending time doing that.
That's a good point.
Um, I wonder, would Chuck have an idea of roughly how much time that would take? I mean, just trying to get a, yeah, Chuck Schultz, I apologize. Just trying to get a roundabout or something that would be reasonable.
I know Chuck Schultz gives them, okay, this is what, this is the plan, guys, is what we're getting done today, this week, whatever. And they go off and do it. I don't know if he actually tracks how much time they do it.
Right, but he would have an idea of how long it takes to put those documents together. So he might be able to give us a.
Yeah.
Something to.
Yeah.
Throw on the wall for a minute.
Okay.
I guess, I don't.
We just need to quantify that. I mean, it can even be just like, he's doing fifteen percent, he's doing twenty percent. But it needs to be quantified.
Yeah, we just don't know, yeah.
I could see it taking ten, ten hours a week, honestly.
Yeah.
Totally could see it taking ten hours.
Oh, yeah. I was thinking that's probably, roughly.
So.
Are you talking about a percentage off their wage?
Yeah, they're basically.
Is what they're working, okay, perfect.
So I know, uh, you threw out seven and a half percent.
And, and I wonder if maybe that's not even enough. Seven and a half seems low if he's doing a bunch of F C A work.
Could we just approve, could we like talk about a seven and a half for him? Percent for him now, and then once it's quantified, we can re-look at it. So at least he's getting something.
That's a great idea.
Yeah.
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 Yeah, seven and a half to be revisited after he figures out how much time it's taking him.
Yeah. That's a great idea.
And so that's seven and a half percent.
It's an adder on top of what he's getting now.
Do we want to have like just a, a base, a, a base percentage or hours until we figure it out or?
Uh, for all of them or just for Mark?
Well, order one at a time.
Probably.
We gotta do one at a time because it's so, yeah.
What Harry was saying is roughly, he figured about tenish.
Yeah.
Which seems about.
Five percent.
Yeah, because, you know, he's going to have to respond to any questions coming back from the government.
Yeah.
You know, he's going to, he's going to have a lot of that back and forth.
Yeah, so this requires more follow up then. We need, we need to get him to, he and Chuck Schultz to quantify. The time, the time he's spending on that stuff. So let's start with seven and a half percent and we'll have to keep working on this in the coming weeks.
Yeah, because I think that would be good for him too, to be able to track and see. And if we give him a little bit of time to do it, he's going to get faster at it too. As time rolls on, but more efficiency saves everybody more money. So you know what I'm saying, so.
And he, he might not have so much feedback from the state because it might be more correct.
As he gets better, the expectation is going to.
Yeah, there's a lot of straightening out to do right now, though.
That's okay, in the long run, that saves us a lot of money.
Seven and a half percent for ten hours per week, just start with that.
Until, yeah, until we know how, exactly how many hours he's doing.
Right.
With him and have him track.
Yeah.
I like that. I think at least it shows that we, we recognize, you know, the work that he's putting in. But we just need, we need further information before we can fi, you know, finalize it, but it shows goodwill.
Absolutely.
Okay, so.
I want to remind everyone that I am going to be gone for all of next week and part of the following week. So Mayor, would you mind checking in with Mark on this and Counselor Williams and Chuck Schultz also? Okay, thank you.
Yes. All right. Okay, so so far with Chuck, um, I mean, that is a, that was just a straight increase. Just a step up basically for him. And that was.
Yeah, it was a way we can get, get past that.
I'm just thinking about the percentage here, hold on. It's a three and a half percent increase. If you're going from, oh, wait a minute.
It should be eight and a half, based on this wonky stupid salary range.
Total.
Well, it'll be after the.
The cola.
Yeah, after the cola, supposedly it's four and a half percent between step two and step three.
Well, yeah, and then it increases by five and a half percent and then six and a half percent and then seven and a half percent. It's a really weird.
What is, I don't, usually you have the, it's weighted.
I've never seen this in my life. It's creative.
Yeah, I've seen it weighted the other way, but not this way. Okay, so this is.
Step six actually aligned with the market range though, so he made it work.
Okay.
I wonder if that's just kind of, he tried to do that kind of, there's no way he would have put the cola in that.
Yeah.
And tried to work the cola in, right?
I don't think so. No, because.
Because that would still not be those weird jumps.
Right, these went into effect in twenty twenty four. And so these don't include the, these now include the twenty twenty five.
Right.
Cola, but the ranges before did not.
Okay.
All right, so.
So uh, utility one, we talked about utility two, we just talked about, uh, now we're to the accounting specialist, that's Dawn.
Oh, man, Dawn is busting her bum, her butt, pardon my language. I know.
Okay, so she is, so this is where she'll be with the cola, twenty nine fifty six.
Yeah, she's doing grants and everything else.
Yeah, she's doing all kinds of.
Yeah, she's taken on a bunch of other things, so.
Including planning.
Yeah.
I mean, we, we actually do have a. Planner coming. We have an agreement for blow, we have the agreement, we're going to be looking at that on Monday.
And she was able to quantify the hours that she spends on this, so.
Okay, good.
So she's got.
That's helpful.
And I'll read it for you, Counselor Williams also. So she wrote that she's looking in the documents for grants, planning and other unfinished items, three hours of the week. Court was put on her plate, um, fielding questions, getting more information than usual on calls. So that in court takes an additional hour. So now we're at four hours. Some planning documents such as S T C fee and agreement creation, case by case basis, going through and attempting to properly maintain H R records. Is another one and a half hours and then meetings at the two hours. So we're at four, five and a half, seven, eight and a half hours, I think, if I did the math correctly.
So if you did, if you did like two, five, six and a halves.
I would just bump it to ten.
And that doesn't even include budget work, right?
Correct.
That is correct.
So I, I support at least a seven and a half percent increase temporarily for her, if not higher.
I do too, and for ten hours per week.
Yeah.
I know, but that's the resolution. This is for me later when I go, oh, yeah, that's what we did. It's very handy later. Okay, well, that's easy enough for, for Dawn. We ready to move on to the administrative assistant?
Okay. Yeah.
So Gobby. Thing I know that, and I already mentioned it, that she's doing is the website and she's gonna be working with Dave, the IT guy.
Oh, okay.
We've also got a, we've got to transfer the ownership of the city website to the city.
You were able to?
No.
Still has to happen. Okay. She's also managing meeting, meeting minutes and public meeting laws, which she was not originally trained on.
Yeah, I think that was something she, she may have mentioned this, that I, I think the former city administrator was hoping to have her take on some of the city recorder.
Yeah, she's been doing all the minutes. So.
So, and actually I got to read through her first batch that I've seen.
Great.
So she's, she's doing well with it.
Awesome. Does she need to have a certain certification or training to be able to do that work?
Yes.
So we need to get her trained if she's interested in doing it regularly.
We, we know people.
That's true. We do know people.
We have friends over in Harrisburg that can help us with certifications.
Awesome.
We have lots of friends.
That's so good.
Yeah, there's some kind of accounting.
So that's the other thing to remember. Gobby is still in probationary.
Check into that, because that was a thing in the past that was happening.
Anyway, I, I don't have a concern, but I would just like to mention, so she is only up to thirty hours a week. Is that correct? Or is it thirty two?
Thirty hours.
Okay, are you taking on these additional responsibilities? Like, did she have time in her schedule to be able to do, to do this?
It's, it's complicated because it has to do with the car situation that she shares with her partner. So I, I don't know if she would want to do more than thirty hours or if she's unable to do more than thirty hours.
Okay.
Have we asked her?
Well, and also keep in mind, if we, if she goes to anything thirty two or more, then we have to.
Purses and all this stuff.
Yeah.
So there's that piece too.
And she may want to, but can't because of the situation.
With their vehicle.
Exactly.
So we're kind of limited in her hours.
So we're gonna bring the bus back, huh?
Bus, trolley, whatever.
Well, we did have a bus service.
Again, so.
Yeah, we still got the bus. There we go. We still have that.
Send a, another email yesterday, a clarification email that I hadn't included in here because I didn't, I had already submitted the
Right.
Thing to Dawn to print. So yesterday she wrote, good morning all for clarification and transparency. I also want to add that the former CA was getting paid or expected to act as the city recorder, but was pushing those duties off on the person previously in my role. As Dawn mentioned, some of that work was going to start being put on myself as well without any position changes or compensation.
Right.
Please note that in the position description you have for my role and the pay rate I accepted for this position had nothing about managing meeting minutes or public meeting laws. It was briefly mentioned in my interview that the hope for this position was that this person would eventually step into the city recorder role itself when they were ready, and that was a verbal expectation, of course. So while the former CA's expectations were that I would do the meeting minutes, please note that was never part of my official role pay or agreement. Right. No website management was ever expecting, was ever expected of me in my role.
Right.
Only uploading documents.
I have a quick question, since you do a lot of HR stuff. Used to be if you were temporarily assigned a job, whether you were doing forty hours or what, you didn't get benefits if it was temporary.
Oh. I've not heard that before. I, I also am not a benefit specialist. It's been a long time since I've done anything with benefits.
Okay.
I, I do remember that, but I don't know if it's because I'm old.
I, I think we'd have to look into organ and federal laws, but I would think that anyone that exceeds the thirty two hour minimum, like we as an employer, we should do the right thing and offer it to them rather than err on the side of, well, you're only doing it temporarily, therefore we're not gonna offer it to you.
I'm just wondering if, if there was something that, if we only needed her to do the extra work for a week or something like that.
I mean, a week, that's probably okay. I mean, when you get into.
Two months or something.
Yeah, yeah.
There is a timeline, because.
So my understanding is it's gotta be more than thirty days. That's my understanding.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and like I was temporary at Peace Health, that's how they start everybody. And I didn't have benefits for nine months.
Peace Health is a terrible, I'm sorry, Peace Health is.
Back as, as soon as twenty twenty oh nine, but honestly, they were actually better, the best company I went to for benefits as far as.
For benefits, because they're Peace Health. But they treat their staff so much.
Medical than I did.
Well, that's interesting.
Crazy.
Yeah, especially after the ACA.
I, I think you're correct, Mayor. It's probably thirty days, but.
It's, I actually have it in the resolution. I looked it up and I put it in the resolution.
Excellent. Okay.
I hate to ask this, but can we review her job description? Because I, I can swear that there was something in there about maintaining like social media.
Um, so key performance areas, active receptionist for City Hall, greets visitors, answers telephone calls, refers inquiries. Receives utility payments and processes daily deposits, takes reservations for city facilities, assists with basic accounting functions. So it's something to note, she's already helping with basic accounting function. Receives a variety of documents, processes and notifies appropriate individual. Prepares a variety of documents which may include correspondence, memorandum, confirmation forms, notices. Enters a variety of computerized data, including scanning documents for electronic storage. Assists with posting documents and notices on the city website, which she would, but yeah. Well, she did, yeah, she said that was an expectation, uploading documents.
Right.
Assists with a variety of schedules pertaining to grants and reports, assists with office supply inventory. I don't see anything about website maintenance, like, I mean, uploading documents is kind of there, but.
It's not maintenance, so it's just, it's just a function.
Yeah.
What's her actual title?
Administrative assistant.
Assistant. I mean, I, I don't doubt that Gobby is doing higher level work, or at least work that is not in her job description. I don't think the work she's doing is would justify a seven and a half percent temporary increase.
Yeah, it does say scheduling meetings and preparing materials and stuff.
Yeah, but she's doing, you know, she said.
A note.
Yeah.
And I think that's, and I know that takes quite a bit of time, so I think that might be the.
It falls under various tasks.
Other tasks as assigned.
I know, I know.
Yeah, that. Working as directed.
But it's, she is, I mean, and, and I get, I get where you're going with that, but also she is picking up a lot of extra slack in the office which is really heavily burdened right now. So we don't. It, I don't think we should appreciate everybody else and not appreciate.
Oh, I think she should be appreciated. I just don't think seven and a half percent is.
Yeah.
I agree. I agree. Definitely. Yeah. For the work and stepping up, definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it does say there's some overlap of duties when other staff in positions require ability to collaborate. So, I mean, it's really kind of vague.
Yeah.
It is.
Probably in like.
On purpose.
Yeah, intentionally, yeah. I, I would three and a half to five percent max. Erring on the lower end, considering she's about to get a, a COLA, and we have talked about providing. Well, are we gonna, what are we gonna do about her? She's on probation or she's in her probationary period still.
Right.
Has another four months of it or four and a half months. Do we want to give her a step increase early also or wait for her to finish her probationary period? Cause that might help us aside the percent increase for temporary.
We did with Chuck, I'm inclined to do the same for her as well.
Be consistent.
And be consistent.
Okay.
That's my thought.
I, I disagree with that. And the reason I do is because she's, has how many months left on her probation? Is it?
Four months. Yeah.
I, I just can't commit to that and right, right now.
And Counselor Ray, yeah, Counselor Ray made a great point too, that it'll max her out of her grade higher or faster.
Right.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So then we're back to temporary pay increase.
Yeah.
So then I would say five percent. And then do we want that to be a certain number of hours like we have for Dawn and Mark?
That might be a good idea, just because it's not gonna be an all the time thing.
Right.
But it still, you know, we're still saying we appreciate that you're taking on this extra load.
Right.
So what do we say? Ten, ten hours for Dawn and Mark?
Remember, she's only working thirty hours a week, so ten hours, that's.
I, I was getting to the percentage part.
Okay.
So hers would be, you know, twenty five percent of the thirty. So seven and a half hours.
Yeah. And I wanna, I wanna clarify, we're talking.
Well.
We're, we're not asking them to track their hours that we're then gonna bill separately, right? Like, we're just saying on the base. Okay, just wanna make, okay, just wanna make sure that's how we're doing it.
You know, on the average, they're gonna probably spend as much time as what we're saying.
Right.
And the only reason I'm saying keeping the percentage at twenty five percent matching what the other people are getting is so we have no no.
Yeah.
Yeah, perception of, of.
Favoritism.
So we had talked about finding out how long it's taking Mark. Is that okay to do? Because those are still, those are like more compliance activities and it's a little bit different than the other, or do we just not want to worry about that and just leave it at the ten hours?
Well, I mean, Dawn was able, Dawn was able to quantify the time she's spending, so I feel confident about implementing a temporary increase for her based on those hours. We don't, I, I hear your question. We don't know how much time Gobby is spending on these things.
Right.
So maybe we should look into that as well, like we are with Mark.
Yeah.
But at least in the meantime.
Yeah, because that's what I was thinking, because then if it ends up being more, then we can figure it out and if it ends up, you know.
So is, is Mark signing off on these reports or does he have to send them to Chuck?
Everything has to go through Chuck, I believe.
Cause he's the designated.
Cause he's the DRC.
Yep.
Okay.
So Gobby, five percent, seven and a half hours per week. Is that what I'm hearing?
That's what we could start with. I mean, unless you guys think it should be only like five, I mean, I don't know how much more she's doing.
Yeah.
Something and then we can adjust, obviously.
Yeah, we should make it clear that these are all adjustable as we see it.
I mean, if we're gonna revisit it, I would actually.
Start lower?
Yeah.
Okay.
For hours or percentage?
Percentage. She doesn't have a lot of hours to flex.
Well, if we say seven and a half hours, that's twenty five percent of her time, right?
Mm-hmm, correct.
I mean, she's, but what that means is she's probably spending less time on her normal job. It's not that she's doing these things in addition to her normal job. Probably some of her admin work is probably not getting complete because she can't work more than X number of hours per week, you know? Is my guess. I don't know that for sure.
Cause we need to have a conversation with her.
We have to have enough, we get to have enough.
It's like three and a half percent instead of five.
That's what I think. I don't know. What do you think, Counselor Williams?
I'm leaning towards five percent.
At seven and a half hours or different hours?
That would.
Very little.
Yep, I would keep it at seven and a half hours. That's, that's just my opinion though, and I'm open to be swayed, so.
Well, I can change my mind and give out.
I am fine with five percent for seven and a half hours per week.
You know, because I could say five hours, you know, two, but.
Yeah, alright, I'm good with five percent. That sounds great.
Five percent at seven and a half hours?
Yeah.
Okay, so there's no argument to go seven, less than seven and a half hours.
I think that's the initial offer and say that can be changed based once it's quantified.
Yeah, right.
I mean, and she's in probation, so this is a, a wonderful opportunity to show us what she can do.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is anybody getting down these little extra questions we wanted to ask so that when we go through?
And we're gonna be.
Oh, yeah.
And we need to do a follow up.
So I'd rather use carrots and sticks anyway, so.
Oh, absolutely, yes.
I, I support five percent. That's good.
Okay, now, uh, if we're done with Gobby, Ron is the only one and that's left. He's got a cost of living adjustment. Dawn mentioned to me that typically he hasn't been getting increases and I don't know why. So I'm, I feel like.
He's due.
He is.
How long has he worked for?
I guess, this is like his third, third year now. You know, we were talking about the baseball field and this is his third baseball.
First, he's a full-time employee? Part-time?
He's a part-time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Did see the one that lives down there too.
But he lives there. So even though it's part time, he's kind of also on, a little bit on call.
Yeah.
If that makes any sense.
Yeah, I just did. I was trying to get his background as a city employee.
Yeah.
The space rental or whatever you want to call it, part of the income, does he understand that or not? Okay.
I believe so, isn't it?
I'm assuming so.
Only, I think they do pay for a couple things, but I don't know what.
What's this down?
Yeah, because I know the city pays for like Chrissy and water and the propane.
Yeah, and, and then the space rent, of course. So, yeah.
I mean, because that's, that's part of it, we have to.
Is part of it to be thinking about. That's correct.
I don't know if y'all saw his resume, but whoa, I was so impressed.
Oh, yeah. I seen it and I thought he was applying for a job or something like this, DA. Groundskeeper is like. He's, he's in retirement mode.
He's, he's got a lot of skills. We're very, very lucky to have him. We have so many good applicants too. It was just amazing. It's like, we could have picked any of them and it would have been fabulous. It was great.
So my understanding is he's here at step one. That's my understanding.
Well, he definitely needs to.
Needs at least a step up, I would think. Good lord.
I mean, he's been here for three years and hasn't gotten one, so he could go up to step three in my opinion. He's.
We're still gonna offer him the COLA increase, right, of two point?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, when I say all employees, that's everybody part-timer too.
Thank you.
Yep.
So effective one, one, he'd be going from seventeen fifty one to seventeen ninety five, and that's still step one. So
Yep.
I support going to step three, which includes the new COLA, which is nineteen twenty seven.
I concur.
Yeah, since he, he's been here how long and, and nobody's bumped him up?
And I believe, didn't he, isn't he, didn't he step up and he's doing all, a bunch of the mowing and stuff too?
Yes, he is doing the mowing over at the city park.
Right.
Yes, he is doing that. He actually, I chatted with him yesterday. He does a lot when there's baseball games over there. It will amaze you what he does.
He does have the, you know, he has to pretty much be the face of the city for all the homeless that might be camped over there since that's where we authorized it, so.
Yeah, he kicks the druggies out, down at the, sorry, down at the river. And he will notify the sheriff's office.
Yeah.
Yeah, he does all kinds of stuff.
We, we allow, there's a roadway in between the ponds and the river.
Yep.
Back behind there, and that's where we allow them to set up tents, but they can only stay one day, right?
Yep, one night.
That is correct.
And it's in between certain hours.
Yeah.
Unless it's flooding, that's the other thing too, because we have to be careful because they're flooding, so. That's a whole issue, but.
Okay.
We needed to make sure they were across the river from the high school.
Yes, there's that too. Okay, so sounds like we, do we have agreement for Ron?
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm good with going to step three and.
Do, do we know, I, I don't think he's doing work outside of his normal job description, right? We don't think. I, I asked Dawn if she knew. I don't think she, or I think I asked her, but she, I don't, I don't know why she would know. Like, it's not her job to track what he's doing.
I mean, what he, he does the janitorial over at the library. And then, you know, whenever we hear, hear MCC and then at City Hall. And I don't know if he, I don't know what he does over at the.
By most of the drama, unlike the rest of our poor staff.
Good to check in with him anyway and just kind of get an idea.
I don't think he does, or if he does, I, I don't think Dawn could find it.
Does the library pay his wages for doing maintenance over there?
There, it's through a contract with us through, right, through June.
Did we get it? I don't remember.
The attorney's got the MOU right there.
Okay, I didn't think that went through yet. So part of that cost is gonna get shifted, right?
Yes, correct, correct. So there is that too. Okay.
I, I just want to say we have an awesome staff. They work together really, really well.
Very fortunate.
I hope this helps.
Yeah.
I don't know.
I enjoy going over to the office now.
Yeah, yeah, right. It's a nice energy. They're.
So.
Two at the front desk.
If we go back to our resolution here. I left this blank because I knew we were gonna have a lot of conversation around this. So and I'll run through it and we can, you know, muddle through the resolution as we go. So with Chuck, we agreed to bump him up a step to twenty two dollars and seventy one cents per hour, and that includes the COLA.
Yep.
Mark, we agreed to seven and a half percent temporary pay increase for ten hours per week. With Dawn.
Well, sorry, and we need to.
We need to follow up.
Yeah.
Have him track what is, is work.
Yeah.
And talk with Chuck as well.
And he gets the COLA too, right? Everybody gets the COLA.
Yeah, the COLA, all of these Chuck, Mark, Dawn, Gobby and Ron are all getting the COLAs.
Plus.
Yes, correct. So Chuck is twenty two seventy one an hour. He's getting bumped up to that. Mark, seven and a half percent. First ten hours per week. Dawn, same thing, seven and a half percent for ten hours per week. Gobby, five percent for seven and a half hours per week. And then Ron, we're bumping him up to, we're bumping him up two steps, actually.
Yeah.
To nineteen twenty seven.
Yep.
Okay, so who wants to make a motion? And, you know, I can hand this off if anybody can read my.
I'll make a motion to accept resolution number twenty twenty five dash twelve. A resolution authorizing temporary pay increases for city employees performing increased job duties and responsibilities as we just discussed.
I'll second.
Don't fight about it. I'm giving that one to Counselor Williams. All right, any other comments or questions before we vote? Okay, great. Counselor Ray.
Yes.
Counselor Linder.
Yes.
Counselor Cuthbertson.
Yes.
Counselor Myers.
Yes.
Counselor Williams.
Yes.
All right, awesome. Thank you.
Thought I'd pull Lonnie Karush on you and say no, but.
No, don't do.
You used to do that all the time.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead. I'm gonna adjourn this session, the first session. So I'm returning our special, special city council meeting number one, so we have concluded that. And it is what time? Oh, we talked, didn't we? Okay, all right. This probably would go a little faster, guys. All right, so I'm gonna go ahead and I bring our special city council meeting number two to order. No, March twentieth, twenty, March twentieth, twenty twenty-five, okay, so. We'll skip the pledge of allegiance, we've already done it once, I don't know if you guys want the exercise or not. Okay, all right, I'm gonna skip, well, let's do roll call, cause I think I have to do that, because this is a new meeting. So we'll do that real quick, so councillor Ray.
Yes.
Mayor Councillor Linder, councillor Cutfordson.
Here.
Councillor Myers. Councillor Williams.
Here.
And mayor sheets is here too, all right, okay, so. The purpose of this special city council meeting is to consider one resolution. To establish a pro temp city recorder or a temporary recorder. In the city of Monroe for a limited time until a permanent city recorder can be hired as required by state of Oregon law. A city recorder, city recorder serves as the custodian of city records. Elections officer and plays a key role in ensuring transparency and public access to information. So. I know it's a big packet, guys. Go ahead and open her up.
I have a, a question on it, um, so. In order to serve it in the function of a city recorder, they have to have a certain certification, is something that I have heard recently? Is that correct? And how do we get around that if, because I've heard it takes like four or five years to get that.
So.
So how or what's our?
I think we're gonna have.
Work around. Through a training.
They'll have to go through a training, or we're gonna have to hire somebody that already has the certification.
Yeah.
One way or the other, we'll have to, either train them up or they're gonna have it already.
I just wanna make sure that whatever we do is within the legal boundaries of what we need to do, so we're.
Now, you mentioned state law here, but you, you have it referenced, but.
I don't know if I actually have it referenced.
I don't see it.
I would have to look it up for you.
Do we, oh, yeah.
And, and also I want to clarify that, that being said, I love the idea of using somebody that's already in place. If they want to take that role on, I think that's fantastic, I just wanna make sure that we're doing it legally and. Nobody's gonna get in trouble, we're doing it all right, and we're able to maybe help somebody that we already have expand their.
Yeah.
Portfolio, I don't know, I'm using, trying to use big words.
No, that's great, that's great. Skill set.
Or temporary have to be certified, or can we?
No, okay, no. So, I mean, there's a couple of different ways to go out, like councillor Cutfordson, cut through, I can't.
You're Chinese speakers.
Cutfordson, okay, anyway. We can go the route of existing city staff, which would be a nice, easy path. Or we can just, we can go ahead and hire out for it, it's a twenty hour per week position at this point. So, I mean. There might actually be folks out there that might be interested in doing that, but it would be temporary.
Right.
So.
I just think, I love the idea of being able to use people that we already have here, cause they're already familiar with, and it would be a little easier, and it gives them an opportunity. And then they can trade out, say, yeah, I like it, no, I don't like it, and, and I think that's great if we can do that opportunity. But I think it's also important that we are thinking about if it needs to be somebody else.
I think that we should post the job and strongly encourage. The employee that we know about to apply. With the hope that he'll apply, and if somebody else applies for a part-time temporary position, which is unlikely. But if somebody else does and they're more qualified, then we do interviews, but.
Right.
I feel like doing a competitive hire is doing due diligence and it, you know, then we're encouraged. And, and he didn't even need to apply, he can just submit a letter of interest, like, we already have his application on file, we already know how qualified he is. If he, like, we don't even know for sure if he wants to do it. So I think we should post the job and say, hey, we posted that job, we'd love if you applied. No pressure, but we would really love it if you did. You're qualified.
Assume we're talking about.
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know if you could say the name.
I guess we can, like, yeah, we could say.
I mean, it's fine.
Yeah, I, I just think that we should.
I was looking, you know, I was looking at the other individuals, I'm like, well, if you do that, the pay's less than what this person's making, and what this person's making. There's only two other people that would be.
It is Ron, I've talked to him, I gave him a copy of the job description and the pay scale. That was probably about three days ago, I haven't heard back from him, so.
Yeah.
That's fine, I've been busy as all can be, so it's like.
Yeah.
But I think that's a great, great option.
I, I think if we post it, it, it doesn't obligate him to do work that he might not actually be interested in doing.
Right.
And it leaves us.
Yeah.
The freedom to hire someone.
Favoritism.
Or have him feel pressured either.
Yeah.
No, I, I, I take your time.
Yep.
Yeah.
Whenever you have a moment, we can talk about it or whatever.
Question, would we not be doing his other duties the other twenty hours or not?
I'd be, I guess he'd be working full-time at that point, or maybe we would hire.
Well, the thing is, June thirtieth is, the library will be transitioning to SBCEA.
Yeah, this place and the city hall.
That'll still, you know, it'll just be substantially less, but I have heard that maybe he might. They might contract him out over at the library.
Oh, that's right.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
So there's that possibility too.
Right.
So.
Easy transition for them.
Yeah, yeah, I think that he needs to have the freedom to decide if he wants to do it or not.
Yep, I'm. No, you, I.
I would rather keep him here if we can, and if that's the path forward, that would work great.
Yeah, well, and I, I love that idea of giving, having him be able to have options, cause I know, like. Just for me personally, not trying to put anything on him, but for me personally, I'm trying to find things that are a little less physical now. And transitioning how I'm doing things, and so it's nice to be able to have those options to go, I could do this or this. And kinda know what's gonna fit my health and lifestyle best.
If, if he decided he was interested and if he had the bandwidth to do this job and the other job. I mean, that would make him eligible for benefits too, which might be nice, if we can afford it.
Yeah.
If we can afford it, so that's the other thing to think about, is if we can't, then we would need to hire another second halftime person.
When he, when the library transitions to SBCEA, so he won't be having those hours over there anymore.
Be on contract.
So then he'll be on contract potentially with the library for that, then he wouldn't be. I'm assuming that his janitorial hours would get reduced after June thirtieth, so.
I really hope he's interested.
And once again, doing it the way that, um, councillor Linder is, is saying, is giving him the flexibility to decide. We're not deciding for him.
Right.
Yeah.
And it gives us, it gives everybody options, I like that.
Yeah. Yep.
Yeah, and maybe others will also, maybe other. City employees will apply also, and we should do our, we should interview everyone that, that interview, that applies if they're a city employee. At least give them.
Yeah.
An interview. Make sure they feel.
They're asked or anything by mere chance.
Just to let you guys know, I, I just looked up on Google, in Oregon, city recorder requirements typically include a bachelor's degree. Experience in administrative support or records management, and certifications like municipal clerk or records manager, along with a valid driver's license.
Okay.
But.
So somebody would have to.
I don't have the ORIS, ORIS here, so.
Thank you for looking that up.
So that's where we're at.
Okay.
Legally required, oh.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, here's a clarifying question, so you, I think you asked the mayor a minute ago, councillor Cutfordson. Whether we would require the certification for the temp role, or would we, I think we have to, right? Even for the temp position, or do we not?
Well, that's the thing that I'm worried about, I wanna make sure that we're completely legal in what we're doing.
I think that they would need to at least be in training.
Yeah.
Right, I think it would be in training, they have the path forward, I don't necessarily know if they have to have all of it. All of the qualifications, I mean.
Yeah.
That, that seems excessive for the pay, honestly.
Yeah.
Right.
I agree, yes.
I, I just would wanna make sure that we're. On the right track, because I don't wanna just. Sorry, I'm a little jaded, I just don't wanna assume that somebody is qualified for doing it, cause they said they were qualified, I wanna be able to check on it. Sorry. No offense, getting a little.
As long as they have some, some historical context and, you know, from a job perspective, and I think we are on the path forward. Giving that certification, we're good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I have a quick question, the people that came in and taught us the meetings law. They're tied right into city quarter.
So we have Michelle Eldridge over in Harrisburg.
Right.
So she, you know, she's a member of the, what is it, the state? Municipal recorders.
Yeah.
Whatever it's called.
Yeah, this, there's a group here. But what I'm saying is, OGAC would know the law.
Well, this is true, yes.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
So, and, you know, they did teach us meeting law. I'm gonna do that.
Right.
So, and which I reminded everybody, and I think.
Oh, yeah, it's on the agenda for Monday night too, to remind everybody.
Cause.
Councillor Ray shouldn't have to do it, cause he wasn't a councillor last year, but.
No, but I've had that where I've sent it in and I didn't confirm that I, they received it.
Is that the one?
Oh, the.
Ethics one?
Yeah.